This time I call the August meeting of the County Commission to order. We have with us tonight Reverend Ben Dawkins at the Anthony's Chapel Church on Medesville Road to give our invocation, and Commissioner Antonakis will lead us in the pledge of allegiance of the flag where we stand.
I'm gonna open this up, but I just want to thank y'all for y'all's service. The Bible teaches us to submit ourselves to government authority, and what that means is believers in Christ Jesus, we're supposed to honor the ones that serve, that protect us. I thank you for your service. Without government authority, God would be able to give him authority before the foundation of the world, that way we could have protection. And that y'all meet the budgets, and what y'all do is very important. And I just wanna encourage y'all to seek the Lord with all of your heart. Y'all have an opportunity with y'all's positions to guide and direct this panel, and I thank y'all for your service. And when people get mad about things, if you feel with the fruit of the Spirit and you have love in your heart, y'all are supposed to love each other. We'll be able to persevere, we'll be able to have that kindness and gentleness and be able to talk to people and do it in a Godly way. And I was gonna say tonight, if somebody's here to cause trouble and they don't know the Lord Jesus Christ, they're personally saved. I'm that guy, I didn't know God 10 years ago, and he saved my life, and it's nothing you can earn, nothing you can deserve, and I thank God for what he did for me and what he's doing through me, and it's by God's grace. And I'm honored to stand here tonight and to be able to open this county meeting in prayer. And I just, I thank y'all for what you do, and just keep seeking the Lord and his guidance, and God's gonna do amazing things in this town. Father God, I just thank you, Lord, for this opportunity, God, that we can come, share the word, God. Faith comes by hearing the word of God, Lord God, we thank you for that, God. We wanna grow in your precious word, Lord God, and I just ask God, these leaders, God, they seek you in all their heart, mind, and soul, Lord God, that they give it all to you, Father God, that you show grace as we walk through this life, Lord, that you show mercy, that you give us wisdom, God, that you never leave, you never forsake us. You guide us, you direct us, Lord God, you ordained the office of government authority, Lord, you did it for our good to protect us, God. We thank you for the EMT workers, Lord God. I thank you that I haven't ever needed them yet, but I know if I live long enough, I'll be able, God, I just thank you for what we have in this precious town, y'all. And I just ask you, continue to bless us and that we put you first in our life, in Jesus' only name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Preacher, we appreciate you coming and sharing that with us and giving our invocation and taking time out of your schedules to come do it. We appreciate it, and we're not gonna be here too long, you're welcome to stay. If you have to leave, we understand that too. So, again, we appreciate you coming and being with us.
I thank y'all for the meaningful call, y'all. Y'all do a great job.
We thank for those kind words, too. That don't happen, I might have to get it off the video and reuse that some. The item four on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the previous meetings. I trust you've looked at them, and if so, I entertain a motion that we approve the minutes of the previous July meetings.
Make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Antonakis, into discussion. Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion carried. The next item is the approval of the agenda. I have two items that I want to remove from the agenda tonight, and one is item number seven, the public hearing. We'll take that one off. They have asked that that be removed without prejudice, Director Seymour?
Yes, sir.
Without prejudice, which means they can do some work and get a few other things for us, and then they can bring it back. So that will not be heard tonight. Seven, R. number nine, that's the averagian FY26 subcontract for transportation with the Leisure Services Department, Director Deal. They have not completed that and got it too hot for tonight's meeting, so I guess, I assume that's gonna come back up at the September meeting. Without any objection to seven and nine being removed, I ask for a motion to approve the agenda, the other items on it.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson, into discussion. Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion carried. Item number six, Departmental Report, A is the Office of Emergency Services, Director Broom.
Chairman and Commissioners, good evening. I have my submitted reports. I wish to look at monthly transports by destination to hospital and ask you to omit that from your reports. Chairman pointed out a discrepancy on that report. I've looked into it, the data generated by the trip reporting system, and it's a statewide issue, the way that data has been collected, and I'm gonna get that fixed as soon as the state IT can get that corrected. Otherwise, you have my submitted reports, and I have no other comment.
Any questions, Director Broom? Six B is recreation, Director Glaze is not here, you have his report in your book, and I do wanna mention that they have about 100 participants in the first pop, in the pop morning, the first game scheduled for August 16th. Soccer, registration ended July the 16th. Director Glaze said he had 180 kids participating in the age group, 3 to 7, 8 to 10, and 12 to 11 to 13. And of course, he did mention, and I think Director Seymour and them have started, and hopefully, first part of next week, the after turf will be put down, the concrete has already been poured, and the batting cage will go from four, from one to four batting cages inside of that, thanks to Reece Paul's Walt, and she, I never sawed that she didn't want something done out there with that batting case. I found out later that she was gonna teach Johnny how to hit the ball. That's what's going on there, but you got your report from Director Glaze. Six C, any questions? Six C is finance, Director Doss.
Chairman, you have all the reports, and there are questions, and when you're ready, I'll give you your fund balance.
Any questions? Not yet, proceed.
Chairman and Commissioners, our cash and cash equivalent report for month ending July 25, our general fund, still owes the back of $2 million, $830,000, $94,000. We received 90% of our $2.6 million, so we received 90% of the fund that was submitted for disaster cleanup, so we just recently received.
Can you pull that microphone down?
$2.6 million.
That made all the difference in the world. Is it you, I know you don't hear what?
I was looking away while I was talking, Chairman. So, the general fund is $2,830,594. The SLOSS seven fund, $2,235,027. The transportation SLOSS fund, $1,650,219. The solid waste fund, $872,684. The American Rescue Plan Fund, $332,187. County Emergency Fund, $314,945. Water Fund Reserve, $275,779. And the water fund itself, $164,282. We have several other funds, Chairman and Commissioners, but those are our major funds. The total cash and cash equivalents in the bank at the end of July was $9,088,896. In our investment accounts, our Raymond James CDs, we have $1,599,185. Our Raymond James and Hans savings, $546,681. Total in our Raymond James accounts, $2,145,866. Our total cash and cash equivalents at the end of July of 2025 was $11,234,762. Chairman, on that note, I would also like to let the board know that even though the board did authorize it, we did not have to dip into our Raymond James accounts to pay any of our, any of our bills waiting for FEMA to submit those funds. We will be submitting another invoice to FEMA for $190,000, which was the retainage to series on the cleanup, and so we'll be getting those funds back, plus the 10% they held on us already. And then, if he's not done it already, Director Broom will be submitting approximately $60,000 in a category Z application. Category Z is what's going to reimburse us for Rothland's professional service of work, as well as reimburse the county for the payroll for Director Broom and my staff and several others to actually put all the grant reports together. Chairman, that's my, Chairman and Commissioners, that's my report.
Any questions, Director Doss, on any of this?
That's gonna total about, what, $450,000?
I'm sorry, sir.
They're gonna total about another $450,000 coming back to the general fund?
I would say it's probably closer to $300,000, but yes, sir. Because we submitted $2.69 million, and they kept about $90,000 of it out, plus another 190, that's about $280, plus another 40, so it's probably a little closer to...
And the $60,000 over there?
Yes, it's getting there, yes, sir.
That's good.
Anybody else? Thank you. Six D, Public Works, Director Seymour, if you would, and I know Director Walton's here, but he's back there with the camera, unless he wants to come up here. In your report, and he can add in if he wants to, because I know it really comes under him, but we all talk about and bring us up to date on the relocation of the 911 center, which we thought would happen Monday, and it didn't.
Yes, sir.
And when you think it's gonna happen and why it didn't happen, and Director Seymour, I mean Walton, okay, Director Seymour?
Yes, sir. You have my written reports, first and foremost, so I don't have anything to add to those unless you have questions. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, I did notice, I did notice that single-family home building permits were up a little bit from last month, but I do want you to, to look at this close. We did, I think, 84 last year. The first six months of this year, we did 63? No, we did 30-something. Where is that? Oh, 34. We did 34, so if you, if you multiply that, that's gonna be 68, which is gonna be well under the 83 that we did last year. So, building permits have slowed down, and let me tell you where this affects us real quick. Without getting into a whole lot of stuff, we know that we, without a rollback, you have to, we have to have growth from somewhere. Our biggest growth comes from new constructed houses in the county, because under real appraisals, you couldn't use that, you'd have to roll that back, or you'd advertise. So, that's, last year, we got about 101, it's about the same thing this year, a little over 101 to $105,000 is what we got with 80-something permits. So if that drops down, it's gonna drop down what we get in that, which is gonna be another source of revenue, like jail fun and speeding tickets and all this other stuff that I got a list of stuff that's way down, that's affecting the revenues and the expenses of everything's going up. So I didn't wanna tell you, we hope, I'm saying all that to say I hope that they lower interest rates a little bit, where we can get some housing built. Commissioner Tankersley?
Chairman, actually, that's through seven months. If it keeps up that pace, we'll only have 58 new home permits.
Yeah, this went through July, that's right, not through June. Thank you. So maybe a little bit.
Maybe a little bit.
But in the last month, we've seen a little bit of uptick, so we're starting to see a little bit more of an increase than what we had in the first six months of the year, and so hopefully, it'll pick back up and we will surpass what the projected rate is.
Let me ask one question, I'm gonna let you move on. Commissioner Antonakis, if anybody in this room should know anything about the housing market, it should be you. Is it down everywhere I just hit?
It is.
It's not just isolated to us, then?
No, it's everyone we've talked to, it's our suppliers. In Columbia County, we've talked to them, we've talked to a lot of surrounding counties, and they're all, it's down everywhere.
Director Seymour?
Yes, sir. So to give you an update on the 911 relocation, we've been working on this thing for about five months, trying to get relocated, and the official date was set for August the 11th. We had all of our vendors there. We ran into a major hiccup to start off with, Reliant, who supplies all of our 911 trunks, and our T1 trunks over there had a major issue with trying to get the lines transferred, the data lines and the phone lines transferred from the existing 911 to the new ones. So, we were unable to relocate and open up Monday. We have had Reliant back out there, they're back out there Tuesday. They built their new system out there and tested, as far as I know, that all tested well. And so now we're in the process of trying to line all of the vendors back up to come back out all in the same day where we can relocate, set that date. And I don't think we've set that date as of yet.
Additional testing.
Yeah, a little more additional testing we want done. So as soon as we get that testing done, we hope that within the next two weeks, we'll have a new date set, and we don't see a hiccup moving forward as long as the testing goes well. So, I will say that, you know, some of the vendors that were out there have done this a bunch of times, moving 911s, and it's not uncommon to have hiccups. Luckily, we were able to keep this center open while we, while we were trying to make the move, so we didn't have a major hiccup, and they were in a temporary location for an extended period of time, so they are currently still in the old facility as of right now, and hopefully, we can get them moved in the next two weeks.
But I wanna give all four people that's involved in it, Director Seymour, Director Walton, Director Doss, Director Acock, they have done on the county side, they were prepared and ready, it wasn't their reason for it, their reason that it didn't happen, really shoe fits it, it was Reliant was the problem, but hopefully, we'll have it moved in a couple of weeks.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Tankersley?
Director Seymour?
Yes, sir.
Because of the delay, is this gonna generate any extra cost?
We don't know that to be exact, but we feel like that the vendors are probably gonna charge us to have to come back and spend another day here. We don't know that as of yet, but we anticipate that they will, and we anticipate that it's probably gonna be somewhere around $10,000 range. Now, I will say this, okay? Two weeks ago, and I'm just gonna lay it out on the table for you, okay? Two weeks ago, myself and Director Doss, Director Walton, and Director Acock met with Reliant on site. The facility was ready to go two weeks ago, and we planned that originally so that they could come in and do the testing. We asked Reliant, we met Reliant out on site two weeks ago today, and told them it was ready, that they could go ahead and build out what they wanted to, and do whatever testing they needed to do, to make sure that the move would be, because everything relies on those telephone lines coming. None of the other vendors can do anything until that happens.
Right.
And they declined to do that. And so Monday, when we had the issues, it was not a fun place to be at the new 911 center Monday. And of course, Tuesday morning, we all met in the chairman's office and placed a call to the president of Reliant, and had a discussion with him about it, and, you know, we don't know, as of right now, we don't know what that additional cost is gonna be.
I don't know what legally we can do to County Attorney, I'll have to tell us a little bit later, but I did tell him that...
Were you gonna, you're looking for some compensation?
I did tell him that.
Yes, that discussion was had, yes.
Any other questions, Director Seymour? Next item is seven, which we pulled off the agenda, but in your Public Works report, if you want to, just tell them that was...
Yes, sir. So, Monday morning, Mr. Vizdanner emailed us and asked us to remove or ask for them to withdraw without prejudice. Board of, the Planning Zone Board has to vote to allow them to withdraw without prejudice, which they did unanimously, which that gives them the right to bring it back up at a later date. And so I'm gonna be having a couple of meetings with them in the next couple of weeks to understand better and have a written program of what they're trying to do, so it can better be defined as to what they're asking for before we read the back.
We have pulled this, as I stated earlier, off the agenda because they withdrew it without prejudice, but I need, clerk, if you will, the, somewhere in the minutes, it needs to reflect the fact that we didn't act on this because they pulled it without prejudice, which means they can bring it back before the County Commission. If it was, if we had killed it, they had did it without, with prejudice, it would be 12 months before they could bring it back. So this could come back before 30, 60, 90 days or whenever. So, the reason we not acting on it is because they did pull it without prejudice, so we can hear it again later.
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, we'll move on down to item number eight, ovarian cancer proclamation. I ask clerk to read the proclamation.
Yes, sir. State of Georgia County of Lincoln, a proclamation. The proclamation by the Board of Commissioners of Lincoln County by and through its chief executive officer, the chairman, recognizing the month of September as ovarian cancer Awareness Month. Whereas, every year, too many Americans are touched by the pain and hardship caused by ovarian cancer, and whereas ovarian cancer is the fifth leading cause of cancer deaths in women in the United States, and causes more deaths than any other gynecological cancer, and whereas in the United States, a woman's lifetime risk of being diagnosed with ovarian cancer is 1 in 78. And whereas, the American Cancer Society estimates 19,680 cases...
Clerk McKenna?
Yes, sir.
Without objection, I'd ask for the suspension of the reading of the proclamation and ask that Director Walton put it under the public notices or somewhere on our website, and people can read it.
Yes, sir.
I hear no objection to suspending the reading of the proclamation, it's done. Item number nine, we took it off. Item 10 is the Verizon Wireless Memorandum of Lease, Attorney Gracie, Director Doss of Broom.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners...
Pull the microphone up closer.
Before you, as a memorandum of lease agreement, Director Broom has worked really hard in securing a contract with Verizon, that has been secured. Verizon has requested that we enter into this memorandum of lease and that it be filed. I reviewed the memorandum and don't have any issues with it. It does reference the entire agreement that we have entered into. So we're gonna ask that a motion to authorize the chairman and county clerk to execute the memorandum of lease agreement.
Excuse me, gentlemen, ladies. Director Broom, you have anything to add?
Only that that's the easiest request for a motion I've had in a long time.
Okay.
It's per...
You heard the request, the county attorney's looked over it, and has asked for a motion that, that we want to be able to accept a 90-day emergency contract effective July the 1st, 25. You know what, I'm on the wrong one.
Yep.
Okay, I'm reading one from the other one. Motion to enter the memorandum of lease, and that we give the authority to do that with Selico and doing business with Verizon for the antenna and ground space at Tower II located on Graves Mountain, with the initial lease period five years, up to five-year lease renewals, and that you'll give the chairman and the county clerk the authority to sign the agreement as their motion.
Does that move, Mr. Chairman?
Second?
A second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Clyde, into discussion. Chairman, Commissioner Tankersley?
I'm not, I'm probably overlooking it, but I'm sort of scanning it pretty quick. Does it have a monthly lease amount in this contract? If it does, what page would that be on?
Mr. Chairman, I can answer that. It doesn't in this memorandum, that the memorandum references the agreement, and in the agreement, it's $30,000 a year.
Is it escalation per year?
I believe it's 3%.
It is 3%? Yes, sir. The memorandum of lease has not changed any terms. It's 2%?
That answer your question?
It does, but it seems like to me that in the agreement, that we'd be agreeing to that it would actually have the figures of what they agreed to pay.
It is a figure of $30,000.
It is.
But it looked like it would be in the agreement.
It is in the agreement. This is just a memorandum that references the agreement, but in the agreement, all the terms are set for...
So we have to vote on the agreement?
I believe we did that last month, yes, sir. And then this was just subsequent to it, they requested the memorandum.
Okay, all right, I'm good.
All right, any questions for the county attorney? If not, no other questions, our motion that, we got a motion, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, and motion's carried. Thank y'all. Item 11 is the update on the alcoholic license ordinance, and this will be considered the first reading. Attorney Gracie?
Chapter 10, Alcoholic Beverages, Article 1 in general, Section 10, 1, Purpose. This chapter has been enacted in accordance with the plan designed for the purposes, among others, of promoting the health and general welfare of the community, to establish reasonable and ascertainable standards for the regulation and control of the licensing and sale of alcoholic beverages, to protect and preserve schools and churches, to give effect to existing land use and to preserve certain residential areas with reasonable consideration, among others, to the character of the areas and their peculiar suitability for particular uses, the congestion in the roads and streets, and with a general view of promoting desirable living conditions and sustainable stability of neighborhoods and property values, and to protect against the evils of concentration of the retail outlets for distilled spirits in one family, or to prevent undesirable persons from engaging in or having any interest in alcoholic beverages.
Attorney Gracie?
Yes, sir.
Without objection, I'd like to suspend the reading of this ordinance. I hear no objection. This is the first reading, and now it will also go on the county's website, Director The people can read it on the website, and the actual vote on it will be at the September meeting, so we need no motion on that. So I'll ask the clerk, place it back on the agenda for September. Item 12 is to repeal the water availability ordinance fee. Attorney Gracie?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we are, we are repealing the water availability fee, and as part of the process, we have to adopt the resolution at two meetings. The first was last month, and this is the second. With your permission, I'll read the resolution.
Okay, this will be resolution number 202508.10, is that correct?
07, 07.2.
All right, hold on a minute, let me get that. I know that was the one we looked at last month, but that changed the date. What is it, clerk? Point 14, what?
What you get?
All right, the resolution number will be... Alright, the resolution number will be twenty twenty-five point, a dash, eight-eight, point one-four, point one-twelve?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just twelve, not one-twelve.
I meant twelve, point twelve. Alright, that's the resolution number on the, on the feeling of the availability fee, and we all know why that's done. Motion to adopt the resolution number, is our motion.
Does that move, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Tankersley, any further discussion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, the motion's carried. Item thirteen is the opioid settlement, Director Dawes.
Chairman Commissioners, uh, currently, uh, the county and the board has approved, excuse me, currently, the board has approved the county joining several national opioid settlements. Uh, we have been presented with another one from Purdue Pharma, as well as we've been notified that there are at least two other settled, national settlement agreements coming. Just last week, we got four settlement payments ranging from thirteen hundred dollars to sixty-nine hundred dollars. We used about forty thousand of those settlement dollars for automatic external defibrillator, and so it is our recommendation that we join the Purdue Pharma, and we would also ask the board to authorize the, the Chairman and the, and the County Attorney to accept any additional national, uh, settlements that we get for opioid settlements, so that way we don't have to keep bringing them back to you. We, we're, we're getting paid in all of these, and it's the same national document, but the County Attorney would make sure that they're beneficial to Lincoln County before we would move and just keep to us, bring them back, otherwise I might have one for the next three meetings. So Chairman, that is the motion to accept the Purdue Pharma, and then, um, would be to authorize...
Okay, the motion is join the National Opioid Settlement, Purdue Pharma LP, and any future national opioid settlements approved by the County Attorney, and to authorize the Chairman and the Clerk to execute the settlement documents, is our motion.
I so moved, Mr. Chairman.
A second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, the motion's carried, thank you, Director Dawes. Item fourteen is to apply for One Georgia Disaster Grant, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Um, the State of Georgia has set aside a, a good deal of money, uh, through the One Georgia Authority for repairs, transportation, uh, that were, occurred during Helene, and so we've identified two areas of, um, concern for us, and we, we're asking the board to give you permission, uh, to sign any documents related to, uh, the grant. The grant is for, um, up to two million dollars. Uh, the two projects that we're looking at are, um, the box covers on Ivy Town Road and the box cover on Metersville Road. Um, so I think, Mr. Chairman, this will take two motions on this item. One would be for, uh, the board to give you the authority to sign any...
I got the motions, you don't have to repeat them.
And the other one would be to hire Cranston, uh, engineering...
Okay, we have two motions on this. Motion to apply for One Georgia Authority Hurricane Disaster Relief Effort Grant for up to two million dollars for the repair of roadway box covers damaged by Hurricane Helene, and to authorize the, authorize the Chairman and the Clerk to execute all grant application documents, is our motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Antonakis, any discussion?
Is there any matching funds to that?
That's a good question, and I was gonna bring that up. It is, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, there, there is a, there's not a specific requirement for matching funds, uh, but obviously, as any grant is, you know, the more you can match, the better the grant would be, um, but there is no specific percentage, uh, and we don't know what the construction cost is gonna be until we do the preliminary engineering report, uh, so at that time, we would use this to apply for the grant, we got the grant, I mean, if we, then we would come back to y'all and make sure what your matching portion would be. We don't know that until we get this preliminary engineering report done.
He did, he did say that, and once we, once we get it and have a pretty good idea of what it's gonna cost, then we'll look at, then it'll come back for us, the whole board is making...
Decision on what we willing to add up for to try to get it.
Right.
Correct, I will take the deadline is till September the twenty-fifth, so we'll have another Commissioners' meeting prior to the deadline of the application, that way y'all can vote and determine how much you want to match.
And we can do it the week before if we have to, the work session is approved, if y'all want. Any other discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, the motion's carried. We need a second motion is to hire Cranston Engineering to conduct a preliminary engineering report that is required to be submitted with the One Georgia Authority Hurricane Disaster Relief Effort Grant, at cost not to exceed nine thousand dollars, with the funds to pay that will come from our T-Splash Fund. Is our motion?
I've made the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is that second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Antonakis, any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, the, the fee is nine thousand nine hundred dollars. If you look at the Cranston proposal on the second page, the fee proposal is nine thousand nine hundred.
Okay, I'll stand corrected, my notes got nine thousand, but go ahead, nine thousand nine hundred.
Correct.
That's what it's gonna, that's what we gotta pay them.
Yes.
Okay, clerk, if you reflect that in the, in the minutes, that's nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, the motion's carried. Thank you, Director Seymour, on that one. Solid waste fees, and most, every one of these items came before the work session, so we did discuss it in that hour and a half meet. So Director Seymour, we are real familiar with the water fees, and I think Lincoln Journal even had all that in the paper last week, uh, this week, so...
Yes.
You can just hit the high spot with that, for the record.
Yes, sir, so, um, real quick, um, Ryland, um, has a escalated scale of trash service with the county, and so every year, we have to adopt, uh, a new fee for the solid waste, um, to go on the, on the tax bill, and it's time to do that, and this year's fee would be two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and forty cents, Chairman.
Okay, um, I'm gonna ask for a motion, then we can discuss it. This, this really maybe didn't have to be voted on tonight, but I, I wanted to do this because it will also be included when we meet to set the millage rates and the tax levy for all participating people, for this to be on the schools, the Development Authority, and the, uh, solid waste fee in the county, because I need a motion to set the tax year twenty-five minimum assessment for residential solid waste for residents of the unincorporated areas of Lincoln County, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and forty cents per owner for occupants of each residential unit, including all residential units located in manufactured home parks and boat clubs, is our motion.
Does that move, Mr. Chairman?
A second.
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Clyde, any discussion on the motion, Commissioner Clyde?
We, we contractually obligated to do this anyway, don't we, and our contract with Ryland, that's the reason.
That is, that is correct, uh, we're not getting anything out of it, it's just cost, the cost of what it costs to, uh, to pay reliance to do that other than the five-dollar administrative fee we get, and we call that administrative fee, and, and I want you to be sure it's not all just administrative fee, that, that is what it also takes to subsidize, to help pay for the transfer station and all out of the landfill, it's not self-supporting, so we have to pay.
And, and the people who get, uh, an exemption based on income that don't...
That's right, we have people that based on income that's exempted, that don't have to pay any of that, has to go to, that administrative fee goes to several things that, that help to fund solid waste. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, the motion's carried. Item sixteen is to repair the parking lots, and I know this is under Director Dawes, but we're gonna take this, we're not gonna take any action on this, but we don't have anything to bring to you right now.
Correct.
It's concrete, and what we have decided to do, and I know we talked about this at the work session, and we made this, we made this little change since five o'clock, really. We, we've decided that, um, best thing for us to do on this is to go ahead and put it out for a bid, advertise it, just like we do regular bidding, they will draw up the bid and send it out, and we'll try to get multiple prices on what it would take to fix these two parking lots. So we're going to, if it's, if it's, no objection to this, we're not like to just postpone this probably till the September meeting.
I appreciate that.
Is it, is it any objection?
It, it might be further than September, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if that matters.
It don't, September, October.
Okay, 'cause this gonna take me at least thirty days to advertise it.
We'll bring it back at a later date.
Yes.
Let's just put it that way, clerk, we'll bring it back at a later date. I can tell you, though, we've had two companies to look at it, and we're gonna get some more companies to look at it, but our parking lots, the longer we wait, the more expensive it's gonna cost. We've already cut out milling and all that stuff, we're not gonna do that. We might have a few sections that might have to be milled, but the parking lot, in particular this lower parking lot, is really, is really in bad shape, and if we don't do something quick, it's gonna be to where we're gonna have to take that milling machine, take up every bit of asphalt on both sides and start over, and we are looking anywhere now between seventy and a hundred and ten thousand dollars or something, so we're gonna try to, we're gonna try to get prices and get them, and talk to them a little bit about what we really need to get those prices down. But the parking lots, at some point in time, it got to be that way, you grind up and go back to gravel parking lots, and it's not just here, we got, we got them coming at the Lincoln Center, we, we're gonna do some work this year at the Recreation Department, maybe this year we try and do.
I was just gonna ask, is the bidding, uh, include the strapping and all too, parking lots?
Yes, sir, it would include the strapping as well, yes.
Okay.
Okay, there's no objection, we're gonna not act on item sixteen, the past parking lots, and we'll bring that up at a later date. Item seventeen is the purchase of two vehi, two trucks, Public Works Community Development, Director Seymour. Thought you were through, didn't you?
I, I did, I thought that.
Um, so we, we've talked about this at length, I think, I think as well in the work session, but we've got some vehicles that, um, have gotten, well, one, motor blue and one, and had four thousand miles on it, we've got a couple of others that are just in bad repair that we need to purchase, uh, a couple of vehicles. We were able to find a couple of vehicles that were used that will, will fit our need, um, just as well, those are two Chevrolet Colorado's, Mr. Chairman, um, that I, we could buy at, um, fourteen thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars.
Director Seymour, let me go ahead with this.
Yes, sir.
'Cause we're gonna say the same thing. Authorized, I need a motion, we're gonna take two motions, I need a motion that authorize the purchase of a twenty twenty-one Chevrolet Colorado pickup truck from Cars Us of Augusta Incorporated, the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars, with funds coming from the American Rescue Funds. Now entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I appreciate you, is our second?
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Clyde, any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, the motion's carried, motion, second motion to authorize the purchase of a twenty twenty-two Chevrolet Colorado pickup truck from Cars Us of Augusta Incorporated in the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars, with the funds coming from the American Rescue Fund. Is our motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Antonakis, any discussion on the motion? Let me say this before you vote, that we said at the work session, I had asked, uh, to Seymour to get bids, two bids for two different companies for Ford Rangers, and the forty thousand dollars apiece, and, and that, that would have been two or three years newer than the trucks that we, that we got for them, and we bought both of these trucks for twenty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars versus about eighty thousand, and, and they gonna bum them up anyway, so I think we did, probably did the right thing. All in favor of the motion, uh, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, the motion's carried. So we got those pickups, I'm not gonna ask for a motion on motion three, we did put,
Rhino liners.
Rhino liners, whatever they call them, they're not Rhinos, uh...
They're, they're not Rhinos, but we did do a spray-in line.
They did a spray-in line, and that was about four fifty-five a piece, I think, uh, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty cents, what it cost for both pickups, and, um, we named those the Rhinos Mike and Combs. He said, he said we need to do that and make you look like a new truck, 'cause City bought one too, you know, and they, they got the same, they told us about it, so, um, that's what we did with those two vehicles.
Which departments are getting those?
The Public Works is getting one in the roads and bridges, and the utilities is getting one, well, it's not road and bridges, I'm wrong, Code Enforcement is getting one, Jim Butler's getting one, and the pickup that he drives is a two thousand ten, and it's going to the road, it, we're gonna transfer it to roads and bridges. It's a bigger truck, it's a three-quarter ton truck, it can pull a trailer, and these can't, Jim likes this little truck, so I've been told he had to be, yeah, okay, that's where the two, those two trucks are going. Agenda item eighteen is Library Board Appointments, we have two, we have the resignation that we had from Ms. Crystal Beard, that is an appoint, at-large appointment by the Chairman, and I would like to recommend and ask for a motion to appoint Sharice Hilton, Sharice Cl, uh, Cright Hilton, to serve the unexpired term, which expires at the end of December the thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. I ask for a motion, and, uh, is our motion?
I've made the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Our motion, is that second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Antonakis, any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
The next appointment is, uh, really what happened here with Commissioner Collins unexpectedly passing away, and nobody was here in January, and Commissioner Antonakis came on in February, and Cheryl and I failed to get this there, and we had realized that Beth Beggs was not reappointed in, in January, so she's continued to serve, that's what it says until you have an appointment, so we have an appointment to fill that unexpired term, which expires on December the thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven, that's a District Two appointment, and that appointment's by Commissioner Antonakis.
I spoke with Ms. Beggs, and I thanked her for continuing to serve, and she agreed to, um, continue to serve, so I would like to appoint Beth Beggs to that position.
Okay, you heard Commissioner Antonakis, with Beth Beggs, that she made that in the form of a motion, is that second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Tankersley, any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, the motion's carried, is our motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, you jump on that one, is that second?
Second.
Commissioner Tankersley made the motion, Commissioner Clyde seconded. Any discussion on whether or not we're gonna adjourn in fifty minutes? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion to adjourn, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, the motion's carried, we stand adjourned. We stand adjourned.